I'd like to call the regular meeting in the Morganton City Council to order March 4th, 2024. Normally, we have public comments. Renee, has anyone signed up for public comments? If not, we'll go straight in. If you'll please stand, I'm going to ask Chris Hawkins if he'll lead us to the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to call the Reverend Jasper Hemp Hill with Morganton Public Safety Chaplain to lead us in an invocation, please.
Thank you, thank you. Let us pray. Father God, I thank you for allowing us to come together one more time. As you continue to be the wind beneath our wings and raise us up on every leaning side, we ask you to lead us and guide us in all that we say and all that we do to be done to glorify your holy name. Lead them with wisdom, knowledge, and understanding, and that we lean not to our own understanding, but to get and get your understanding. So have your way in this house, and you do what you do best, and let's be God all by yourself. And everybody say amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Jasper. I'd like to introduce council to my far right, Wendy Cato, Mayor Protim, Chris Jernigan, City Council, Louie Vina, our City Attorney, I'm Ronnie Thompson, your Mayor, Sally Sandy, City Manager, Betsy McSwain, City Council, Chris Hawkins, City Council, Renee Carswell, our City Clerk, and interpreters for the deaf, Denette Stellmer-Bridgen and Ernest Williams IV. We have several announcements about service pens. These individuals cannot be with us, but Tammy Kirkpatrick, who works in the Finance Department as an accounting assistant, recently received a 20-year pen, and David Langley, who is in our Public Works Department managing the warehouse, received a 25-year pen. Our first advocacy in issues is on Compass Update. I'm going to call Greg Branch if you come forward. Greg is the Director of Compass Cable, and he is going to share with us an update.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As all of you know, we go through negotiations with our TV programmers from time to time. And this past December, January timeframe was that period for our local channels, our ABC, NBC, Fox, and all those guys. And we were expecting them to jump considerably, and they did. Looks like we're looking at about a 25% increase on those local channels. And so on the good news side of that is typically, most of our other programming goes up 7% on a typical year. And I'm not expecting that to go up to about 3 and 1/4. So it's not going to offset the locals by no means. But so as we work through the budget, we're going to be looking at some considerable increases to offset some of those programming increases. And so, you know, everybody wants those local channels, and even Spectrum and those guys, they have their surcharge for broadcast TV as well. Ours, if we go up like we're in, you know, need to go up, we're probably looking at that surcharge going from $15 to anywhere from $22, $23. And so they're currently at 25 and some change. So they're getting the same increases we're getting. Now, our light basic tier, which has all of our local channels on it, has all of those, such as MeTV, Antenna TV, Laugh TV, all of that old good TV that I call it, that's really worth watching. And so it's got the Mashers, the Andy Griffiths, Beverly Hillbillies, all of that good TV. Even on Saturday morning, it has the Looney Tunes and all of that good cartoons that we grew up on watching Saturday mornings. So all of those channels are part of those local channels that we see. Unfortunately, WBTV, Channel 3, had Circle TV, which was a music Opry TV channel. They did away with it. They didn't give us any notification that they were doing away with it. They didn't lower our price because it was going away. We've had a lot of questions about that. But so I just want to kind of give everybody an update on the price. It's probably more than likely going to go up, and it's probably going to be a shocker to some people. But if you work with it daily and you see what others are doing around you, it's really not a shock. And so what's that going to be? It means your bill's going to go up, and you're going to be calling me upset about that. And so on the other side of that, we currently have over 4,500 Internet subscribers, over 900 phone subscribers, which we keep growing the commercial side of that, because phone service for residential keeps going away, and I'm surprised that people even keep that. Most of the time, it's for security alarms and things that are needed that way. We do currently have 128 new 1G subscribers since we rolled that out. We are currently offering a promotion of a $10 discount, which makes it 99, 95. And we're looking to do away with that at the end of March. But what that means is, is if you've got that promotion, you sign up for that promotion, you're going to keep it. And it's not, it doesn't go away. So if you are on the fence, thinking that you need that extra speed, you want that gig speed, we will be taking that away at the end of March. And so I think that's pretty much it. I mean, really and truly, if you think about our light basic package, it's 61 channels. And for what we offer it for, it's still a considerable deal considering the amount of channels we offer and those local TV channels. And if you've got any questions, you're more than welcome to come see me or ask them, and I'll try to answer them.
Any questions for Greg?
Greg, thanks so much.
I'd like to say I watched The Rockford Files last night, and I thoroughly enjoyed it. And he caught the man. I would like to say that.
Okay, now that we know the man has been caught, next on our agenda is the Morganton Arts Commission update. Sharon Jablonsky, who's the Director of Culture and Creative Development, is going to give us some announcements.
I would just say that if you take Mash away, I'm in big trouble. I will talk about the Morganton Cultural Arts Commission. Chad's going to hopefully bring up a, there we go. I just want to first tell you that you guys appointed this in 2021, and I am really proud of them. This, we've got our logo that we try to get out everywhere we can. We started the April Poetry Month, which has the rain poems. If you're around town, and when it rains, you can actually see the poems. They've hung around for a couple of years now, but we'll be putting some more out. This year, though, we are doing April showers bring May flowers. And we're going to do an umbrella finally and floral installation. I've only been trying to do this forever. So I've got the guys nervous, but we're going to pull it off. We started Sculpture on the Town, which I'm going to talk to you about tonight. I'm so excited about our sculptures this year. Music on the Porch Day, which, man, has it taken off. And I think Jay, I was hoping he might be here tonight, but I think he has over 30 or 34 places and more growing every year. And it's an international thing. So it's really cool when you look at Morganton on the map with the world, you know. We completed the wraps on the electric panels, and we sponsored the Fire and Ice sculpture that we had a year before last, so that everybody had a big thing over. So just a little update there. To tell you about, go ahead, Chad, you move the next one. I want to show you the Sculpture on the Town for this year. So the first one is the Neutron Star. We asked for much larger pieces this year. We found out very quickly that 10-foot does not cut it. And so this will be a larger challenge for us, getting them in. But this one's around 14 feet tall. Hannah Jubrin from Grimesland, I hope I don't say that wrong, Grimesland, North Carolina.
That's correct.
Thank you. I do not know where that is.
Eastern North Carolina, Pitt County.
There you go. I just wanted to say, I should have known. It's still in paint. Just the artist's statement, the development of this project evolved from his interest in astronomy and the cosmos. His exploration into the cosmos implies a universe with a variety of star clusters and galaxies. He would like the viewer to gaze, interact, and experience the sculpture. We have not decided on the locations yet. You can go to the next one. This is Basics Number 64 by Mathias Newman out of Brooklyn, New York. He is actually from Europe. He moved to New York a couple of years ago. And he does, I find this very interesting, he has engaged with this series of public interventions over the last nine years. His first installation was in the National Museum for Contemporary Art in Bucharest, Romania. The series has since had excess of 60 iterations, excuse me, in public spaces throughout the United States and Europe. What is really cool about this is this proposed work will be a continuation of the work series. It is constructed out of two-by-four dimensional lumber in a tried and tested method within a two-day installation on site.
Wow.
I know. It's very cool. So those are some of his examples. The one before, so two this year have not been built yet. Chad, if you'll back up one just a second. That's what he will build for us. So it's very much three-dimensional. Okay, you go to the next. This one, A Folly, A Due, A Shared Madness, you catch A Haired Madness, A Shared Madness, by Josh and Angelica Coat out of Bakersfield, North Carolina. This will be built for us. And you show them the next one. These are examples of what they've done in the past, and it's welded steel and found metal. And you can go to the next one. I thought I had a statement from them in here, too. It's a kinetic sculpture depicting two rabbits gracefully dancing atop a contraption constructed of moving parts which can rotate when the handle is turned. Hopefully, that will not actually happen. The rabbits are made from steel hay belling wire, and the contraption and platform on which they stand consists of various antique pieces of found metal. The sculpture will stand at 11 feet tall, five feet wide and four feet deep. So, and then the last one, as you can see, these are our three pieces this year. If you remember correctly, we do these for the year, and then they go away in February. So these will come in April 1st to the 15th. And I think it really adds a lot to the town. I'm very excited. So thank you so much.
Thanks. Okay, next we have a proclamation for the Chamber of Commerce. I'd like to read that proclamation. Whereas the Burke County Chamber of Commerce has promoted March 20th through 27th, 2024, as the 2024 Litter Sweep Week in the city of Morganton, North Carolina. And the Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors and Staff encourages citizens from across the city to take an active role in making their community cleaner. And whereas the Burke County Chamber of Commerce will be supported by the North Carolina Department of Transportation to organize the 2024 Litter Sweep Week countywide roadside cleanup to ensure clean and beautiful roads in the city of Morganton. And whereas chamber members, board and staff, community service workers, local government agencies, community leaders, civic and community organizations, businesses, churches, schools, and environmentally concerned citizens conduct local cleanups during this 2024 Litter Sweep Week. And whereas the 2024 cleanup will be the third for the Burke County Chamber of Commerce, and it's more than 600 members. And whereas the 2024 Litter Sweep Week cleanup will be part of educating the children of this great city regarding the importance of a clean environment to the quality of life in Morganton, North Carolina. Now therefore, we, the City Council for the city of Morganton, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim March 20th through 27th, 2024, as the Burke County Chamber of Commerce 2024 Litter Sweep Week. We urge all our citizens to participate in this event to maintain the great beauty of our city. The cleanup will increase awareness of the need for cleaner road sides, emphasize the importance of not littering, and encouraging recycling of solid waste. Approved this fourth day of March 2024, Ronnie Thompson, Mayor, Renee Carswell, City Clerk. Do I have a motion to accept this proclamation?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Say.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. I'll ask Chris Jernigan if he'll please present that proclamation to our Chamber of Commerce President.
Ladies, good to see you tonight. We all believe Morganton is the most beautiful place on earth. And part of the reason it continues to be the most beautiful place is because the Chamber has enacted the Litter Sweep Week. And we appreciate all the work that you guys do, but all the chamber members do as well. And I see Gary out there. I hope he's got new tennis shoes and new garbage bags and is ready to go do it.
One of our teams.
There you go. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, next on our agenda is a proclamation for Vietnam War Veterans Day. Whereas the Vietnam War lasted almost 20 years, spanning the period between November 1955 and April 1975. And whereas nearly 3 million American soldiers served in uniform in Vietnam, and more than 58,000 sacrificed their lives to protect our nation's freedom. And whereas the last American soldiers departed Vietnam on March 29th, 1973. And whereas of the more than 700,000 veterans living in North Carolina, more than 250,000 served in the Vietnam War, and many live in our area. And whereas many American veterans of the Vietnam War bear permanent physical and mental scars from their time in service, and nonetheless face neglect, derision, and treatment unbefitting their courage. And whereas it is our duties as Americans to seek out and extend the city's profound gratitude to each of our Vietnam veterans and their families and caretakers while expressing deep compassion for the families of the fallen, those who remain missing and unaccounted for. Now therefore, I, Ronnie Thompson, Mayor of the city of Morganton, do hereby proclaim March 29th, 2024, as Vietnam War Veterans Day in Morganton, and commend its observance to all. And witness thereof, I set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Morganton to be affixed this fourth day of March of the year of our Lord, 2024. I'll actually give that proclamation on March 29th to our veterans. Let's see. I have a couple of announcements to make. The Human Relations Commission would like to recognize that March has been designated nationally as Women's History Month. American women have played a unique role throughout the history of our city, our state, and our nation by providing the majority of the volunteer labor force, establishing early charitable, philanthropic, and cultural institutions, serving as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement, serving courageously in the military, and leading in abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, the peace movement, which has caused a more fair and just society of all. So Women's History Month is March. And then the Human Relations Commission would also like to recognize that March is Irish-American Heritage Month. Irish-Americans have long been recognized since 1991 for their contributions that Irish immigrants and their descendants have made to the US society. Virtually every realm of American endeavor, from steelworking to biotechnology to literature, has seen improvement through Irish-descended hands and minds. Their incredible contribution to American society have kept our city, county, and country on the top tiers of accomplishments. Okay, upcoming events. The annual Easter egg hunt is going to be Saturday, March 23rd, 2024. The games will start at 10:00 AM. The Easter egg hunt will begin at 11:00 AM, Catawba River Soccer, at the Catawba River Soccer Complex. It's co-sponsored by Morganton Parks and Recreation and Summit Community Church. Baseball opening day is Monday, April 8th, 2024, at 6:00 PM at Catawba Meadows. In downtown, our city hall, there's art in the hallway from February and March. Watercolor and pencil by Terry Ratchford. Terry is a self-taught watercolor and color pencil artist from Southern Gaston County. Terry's art is inspired by objects experienced and seen around her every day. Her work is an opportunity to revisit the childlike joy of being surprised. Our pop-up Winter's Farmer Market is Saturday, March 9th, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM at 111 North Green Street. And our famous ACC Chili Cookoff is going to be Friday, March 15th, 11:00 AM to 1:30 at the Morganton Community House. Tickets are $10 each. Please note that this event is on Friday rather than Thursday as previous years of this event. At the comma Tuesday, March 12th, at 7:30, is going to be the Peking Acrobats. And I think that's all our announcements. Sally, do we have anything from the power agency? Update?
Just to let you know that the first meeting of the rate committee is tomorrow, and we are obviously represented in that. And that's going to lead us to ultimately what our wholesale power costs will be for the budget season.
Thank you so much. Next is our consent agenda. We have nine items. Sally?
Yes. So for those of you viewing at home, those nine items, we consider them to be really routine in nature, would ask you to approve them in one motion unless you want something discussed separately. And for those of you, they include minutes from the February 5th council meeting, the participation once again in the 2025 urban archery season. That's something we've been doing for quite a few years now. Budget amendments, one to recognize proceeds from the sale of property at 210 West Meeting Street in the amount of $24,968.80. A budget amendment to recognize several insurance reimbursements for damage to properties. The first one is $3,557.12 for recreation vehicle damage, then $1,897.55 for damage to a wastewater treatment plant truck, and then damage to substation in the amount, electric substation in the amount of $6,721.7. Recognition of receipt of $10,000 from an Electric Cities Downtown Revitalization Grant, and that's a program that they do every year. You can qualify for the $10,000 every three years. And that was used in part of the outfit at MOCO for a conference room that can be used by the community, and it was used for the IT outfit in that conference room. And then approval of the 2024 Downtown Calendar of Events and the corresponding ordinance scheduling temporary closures of streets for those events. And then finally, approval of the Contract for Audit Services. It's our third year in the three-year contract. That is with Thompson, Price, Scott, Adams and Company for the amount of $40,500.
Any member of council wish to have any items removed from the consent agenda? If not, do I have a motion?
I so move, accept the consent agenda.
We have a motion to accept the consent agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Under New Business, our next item is a public hearing. A public hearing in consideration of a request to permanently close and abandon an unopened right-of-way portion of Remarco Road. Public hearing is now in session. Louis, will you give us some updates?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This, you will recall, this was on your agenda last month to call for a public hearing, and you adopted a resolution of intent to consider doing this. It's a standard format of street closing. In this case, it's Remarco Road, which you turn off of Jamestown Road, and you see there's a map attached in your package that shows where it is, where Remarco Road currently runs. The former right-of-way for Remarco Road was a bit to the, I believe that's to the east of where it currently is. And when the road was, Remarco Road was relocated when DOT widened and rerouted Jamestown Road many years ago. But the, and Remarco Road is a city street. The old right-of-way, which is shown on that map in the dark line, it's sort of a triangular piece. It's parallel to the current road. It was abandoned, closed, has not been used as a road in many decades. The property that immediately adjoins it on that side of Remarco Road is currently owned by MS and MF Development LLC. The gentlemen who own that company are here tonight. They have petitioned to have the city close and abandon that old right-of-way. And since they are the only adjoining landowner, the, under the normal course of things, that title would pass to them if you choose to adopt this. There's, it was duly, the hearing has been duly advertised, published in the paper, duly advertised and posted on the site.
Okay.
And to my knowledge, no comments have been received whatsoever.
This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak concerning the permanently closure and abandoning this portion of Remarco Road?
And I guess I should add, what should be obvious from the map and what I said, there's no issue in this case of anybody losing any access to their property as a result of this road closing, because there isn't anyone.
Again, this is a public hearing. And seeing no one approaching, public hearing is closed. What's the wish of council? What's the wish of council?
Motion to adopt an ordinance in order permanently closing a portion of the former course of Remarco Road and abandoning the right-of-way of such road, reserving however, any public utilities' rights of way within such abandoned segment and directing city staff to record the ordinance in order as required by statute.
Thank you, Wendy. Have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Uh, next is a public hearing in consideration of a text and map amendment to introduce an active frontage overlay in the downtown Morganton National Historic District. I'm calling Wendy Smith to please give us some information. And the public hearing is now open. Wendy?
Thank you. This item's, uh, as mayor said, to introduce an active frontage overlay that limits residential uses on ground floor street frontages in the downtown historic district. Prior to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting about three weeks ago, our staff fielded a number of phone calls, emails and letters relating to information that people had been told about the proposal by individuals not representing the city. That was inaccurate. Primarily, the comments were around the amendment limiting office uses. Would note that since the public, the P&amp;Z meeting, we've had no public comments whatsoever. So we believe that that cleared up some of those issues. So I wanted to start here by giving some quick bullet points of what this is about and what it's not about. The amendment will only limit residential uses on ground floor street frontages in the limited area of the downtown historic district as shown on the map in your packet. All other uses besides residential, which includes retail, office, civic, entertainment services, will continue to be permitted on the ground floor street frontages and everywhere else in the CBD as currently permitted by the ordinance. You'll be able to continue to have offices, to expand existing offices and to open new office uses. There's no requirement that any space has to be a retail use. No changes are required to any existing businesses, uses or residences as a result of any of the changes in any part of the zoning ordinance. There's no proposed limit or maximum requirement for a percentage of the ground floor to be used for any type of use. And there's no proposed limit to residential that is not on the ground floor street frontage. The purpose of introducing the active frontages overlay is to protect street frontages in this area from being taken over by private residences where the public is restricted from entering. The intent of such overlay is to support uses that encourage the general public to continue to walk down the street onto more and more uses that the public can interact with on a spontaneous basis. A proliferation of ground floor street frontage residential uses would create areas where the public cannot interact and would not lead to a thriving main street. The boundary of the overlay district was selected to match the existing downtown historic district as those boundaries are approximately a quarter mile in each direction, which is universally recognized easy walking distance. And as an already defined boundary, it's considered best practice to be consistent rather than to create a new boundary. So that's our proposal.
Okay, this is public hearing. Is anyone like to speak for or against this?
You'll be happy to know I will not give my 10-minute dissertation that I gave at P&amp;Z.
Thank you.
So, um, this did come out of the Main Street Office. I would repeat that this came directly from the 2018 master plan for downtown, which over 800 people participated in. It was the second thing out of 10 to be done within five years. All I can say is this is on me. It should have been done in 2019. I have yet to forgive myself for this, um, because two got in before. Uh, and, and I mean this as strongly as I said it at P&amp;Z. This is Main Street 101. You do not put housing on the first floor in your core district. My, my wording would have been much stricter, but I'm happy with this that at least there's no retail on the first floor facing the street.
No, a resident.
I mean, excuse me, there's no, thank God, thank you. There's no house, uh, there's no housing, there's no residential on the first floor facing the street. Yes, we will always have offices in downtown Morganton. Our goal as a Main Street pro- um, program is to put active retail spaces. It doesn't prohibit office or anything else. It just means that your goal as a Main Street program is to put your retail in your core district. And as I said before, and I'll repeat again for any of those listening, why on earth would I need a downtown hotel if I'm going to fill West Union Street and East Union Street with residential uses? Where, where are these folks to go? I guess it needs to be a boarding house. So I, I'm very clear about, uh, you know me. I, I don't mince words and I'm very passionate about downtown. And, and I do not apologize for that. So I'm just saying that, um, it, it means a lot. We, we've got to keep that from happening. And that does not mean that two blocks off center, okay? It should be housing and it can be first floor and that is fine. But it is not how it happens in your core district. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. Anyone else like to speak for or against this public hearing? If not, public hearings now close. What's the wish of council?
Make a motion to adopt an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance by adding a new subsection 3.2.10, creating an active frontages overlay and by creating or amending the definition of certain terms accordingly and authorizing mayor and city manager to sign any necessary documents.
Thank you, Chris. I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Butch. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next on our agenda is a consideration of a budget amendment for the purchase of transformers. Sally?
Yes, so, um, a week from this past Friday, we had our city council workshop and looked at a lot of capital requests and also took a field trip to see a lot of capital projects that we have done and some that are about to get underway. In that discussion, we talked a lot about electric and, and we even saw some transformers over at the warehouse. To say that they are very difficult to get now is an understatement. And to say that we are needing to restock our inventory and, and to change how many we keep in stock because of the difficulty in getting them is an understatement. So we have assessed that and are asking you to approve a mid-year budget amendment in the amount of $604,500. And that is totally for purchasing transformers to restock. Some, some of those are 12 to 14 months' delivery.
What's, what's the wish of council?
I'll enter a motion to approve a budget amendment in the amount of $604,500 to appropriate retained earnings to purchase transformers to restock the inventory.
Thank you, Butch. I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Chris. Any discussion?
Yeah, I remember from our tour, but you remember approximately how many transformers that buys? It was staggering how expensive each of them were.
It's either six or eight, isn't it? Or, how many? 11 to 15.
That's amazing. Yeah.
Any further questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Uh, next is consideration of approval of a contract for the construction of an addition to the Beanstalk Journey Adventure Course and a related budget amendment. Call our director of recreation, Brian Fish, if he'll give us an update, please.
Good evening, thank you. Uh, so as many of you know, we've had the Beanstalk Builders, for almost 15 years, has had the zip lines out at Catawba Meadows Park. It's, it's a wonderful amenity, um, but it is hard for some families to come out or using the playground or coming for a ball tournament to say, hey, they've got zip lines. Let's go, go do that. It's, you know, two, three hours, uh, if not longer. It's been hard for Beanstalk, uh, to have staff to man that. Two or three certified staff for eight to 10 people. So, so we met with Mike Fishesher with Beanstalk Builders, looking to add some new amenities to the park. And that, uh, what we're looking at is an aerial adventure park. You've seen some maybe at, uh, some similar at Great Wolf Lodge. There's a few others in, within a couple hours of Morganton. It would, the biggest thing would, it's, it's a new amenity to the park that would take a family an hour, hour and a half to go, uh, do the, uh, do the aerial park as you can see on, on the, uh, the monitors. And you can have up to 30 people with one or two staff, uh, watching. There are safety harnesses that you can click in. You, you can move to, in between the el- the new elements. You don't have to worry about coming off. You can't, can't move without one, uh, being attached at all times. Kids as young as four, um, we say four, but it's usually about 48 inches, can participate and use it all the way up to whoever's brave enough to try them once you get past a certain age. It's, um, it, the, the Beanstalk, when you come in, you take a right towards the baseball field parking lot. It's the structures on the left. Those poles would remain. This will be added to those poles, um, uh, so there wouldn't, wouldn't have to be any of, any new poles added would be on the existing structures. The cost of this, we're looking up to $80,000 with a 50/50 match, um, between us, the City of Morganton and the Recreation Foundation. And we just think it will, it'll be a great addition to the park. Uh, like, like some have said, they come in with their families. You can come in, participate in an hour, hour and a half and get back to your tournament or go back to the playground, to the greenway. It's, it would just be something we think would, would continue to add to a wonderful park.
Any questions for Brian?
I would just add that the 40,000, up to 40,000 from the city, we would recommend come out of our ARPA funding that, that is still, we still have some of that to use. And we are required to obligate that by the end of this calendar year.
What's the wish of council?
I make a motion to approve a contract with Beanstalk Journey Adventure Course to construct in addition to the Beanstalk Journey Adventure Course at a cost of $80,000 with the City of Morganton funding $40,000 and the Morganton Recreation Foundation funding $40,000 and to authorize a mayor and or city manager to execute such contract and any other necessary documents.
Thank you, Chris. I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Wendy. Any discussion? All in favor?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, about in the last couple of weeks, NC Weekend on PBS visited one in the Raleigh area. And it was really incredible to see these young kids. They had to have been four or five, but to think about a four or five-year-old participating in those things was really refreshing. And I think it'd be a wonderful addition to the park down there.
Any other comments, Chris?
You might even do it too, Butch. We're not, we're not too old, are we?
Well, I've done the zip line part. And that is a question of the zip line, some of the zip line features will still remain, right?
All of the existing features will remain.
That's great.
Any other comments from city council? Okay, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. We need a second amendment, please, a second motion.
Make a motion to approve a budget amendment to transfer funds from the ARPA fund, amount of $40,000, and the Morganton Recreation Foundation, $40,000 for the addition to the Beanstalk Journey Adventure Course.
Thank you, Chris. I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Chris, thank you. Any further discussion? Butch, you look like.
I've said enough.
Okay. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Uh, next on our agenda is a cultural arts commission appointment. Sally, you want to cover this?
Uh, sure. Um, so Sharon talked about this group earlier tonight and, and you created them in 2021. And they were a new group and the folks who volunteered to serve are still serving because we neglected to do reappointments. But the good news is that all of those serving would like to continue. So there is a term that expired in June 2022, although it says they continue serving until you appoint someone. Deb Jones is ex-officio member and she represents the Burke Arts Council and would like to continue to do that. And we would like for her to continue to do that. And then the four terms from June 2023 are Leanne Britton, Darren Lathan, Courtney Long and Nancy Van Oppen. And they have all agreed to continue and we would like for you to consider reappointing them. And that would be for a term, Debs would end on June 1, 2025, and these folks would end on June 1, 2026. Then there's room to add more people to that. And we have received applications from Jay Brant and from Pretty Happer. And they would both like to serve those. If you consider them, those terms would expire on June 1, 2027.
What's the wish of council?
Motion to reappoint Leanne Britton, Darren Lathan, Courtney Long and Nancy Van Oppen to serve on the Cultural Arts Commission for three-year terms to expire on June 1st, 2026. To reappoint Deborah Jones as an ex-officio member representing the Burke Arts Council for a three-year term to expire on June 1st, 2025. And to appoint Jay Brant and Pretty Happer for three-year terms to expire on June 1st, 2027.
Thank you, Wendy. Have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Chris. Any discussion? They do a great job, they really do. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, we have a, two additions to the agenda and which are fantastic news that we'd like to, um, allow the public to be aware of. Sally, I'll let you choose which one you'd like to go first.
I feel like we need a drum roll or something. Thank you, thank you. Yes, we can cheer. So for at least 10 years, uh, we have been working on two large water and wastewater projects. And we have talked about them numerous times at this meeting, workshops, over and over again. And the great news is, is that we have received notice from the state today that, um, the grant money that was included in the appropriations in last session that are coming to support these projects is being released. So we can actually get these projects out to bid, move forward with them and maybe complete them and stop talking about them soon. Uh, the first one, and, and in order to do that, you all have to authorize the acceptance of the grant and, and do that really in the form of a resolution. So yes, another step so that we can use this money. Uh, the first one we'll talk about is the water treatment plant. And that is very affectionately known as our sedimentation, flocculation and coagulation project. And lots of improvements to our, our sediment process at the water treatment plant, suffice it to say. Uh, the, the new cost for this is $6.6 million. And we are looking to get all of that money from the state of North Carolina. So we would very respectfully ask that you adopt a resolution so we can accept those dollars.
What is the wish of council?
I think we would all like to talk together, accepting this one. But my love for accepting money, I'm going to jump out in front of everybody and make the motion to authorize the acceptance of a grant of $6,601,400, and I'll stop for a second, from North Carolina Division of Water Infrastructure for the Water Treatment Plant Sedimentation Basin Improvement Project.
Thank you, Butch. I have a motion to have a second.
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 Three seconds. Okay, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Absolutely.
Sally, we have another motion and another announcement?
We do. Now, if that one was not exciting enough, there is, yes, the Silver Creek Pump Station. The, the workhorse i- in our sanitary sewer system, and there is no doubt about that. And very outdated station. We, we saw it on our tour. And it is next to our soccer complex and next to Silver Creek. So it's important that it works. So this project will introduce new technology, enlarge the pump sizes, help us in flood events and, and overall in general, improve that. And there'll also be some beautification as a part of this so that, that, that little workhorse sitting there, working hard, will look pretty on the outside. Um, the cost for this project is just under $6.8 million. And we have multiple sources of funding for this project. And we are asking that the state grant fund $5,053,953. So we would really like a resolution saying that we can accept those dollars.
What's the wish of council?
I'd love to share it, the happiness with somebody else this time.
I'll, I'll, I'll take that lead in, Butch, and I'll make a motion to authorize the acceptance of a grant for $5,053,953 from the North Carolina Division of Water Infrastructure for the Silver Creek Pump Station.
Thank you, Chris. I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Sally, this would really help the Boss roadside when we'll. Sally, this would really help the Boss Road side, just the whole western side of the city, wouldn't it?
All sides of the city, I'm just going to tell you. And so the Boss Road sewer line will definitely help that, and this, I mean, this is more than just the west side. This is even bigger than that.
Okay.
So super exciting.
Any other comments? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Anything else to come before city council?
In the days ahead, we'll be bringing you documents so that we can award contracts and get work started on these two.
I would like to remind everybody about the Easter egg hunt and the chili kickoff. Have a great week. We adjourned.